Mr. Clerk Segrist, could you please call roll?
All right, Trustee Anthony, the record reflect he is absent. Trustee Foster.
Hello.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Hello.
The record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Steineman.
I am here.
And finally Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Could I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
You, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying none, motion carries. Non-agenda, citizens non-agenda item. Oh, no, we've got a couple of minutes to approve, two sets of minutes. Can I call for a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2017?
So moved. Second.
Favor of approving the minutes as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Another set of motion, please, for the 29th.
So moved.
Those in favor of approving the minutes of August 29th, 2017 as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying none, motion carries. Now would be time in the agenda for citizens non-agenda item. If you have, I don't see any citizens in the audience this evening. I see a couple gentlemen here to do some business. That being said, Madam Treasurer, could we call for a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Supervisor, I make the motion.
Second.
Favor of paying the bills again this month, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, very good. Public hearing. Item one here. Let's see, we have on the agenda this evening, a public hearing and approval of millage rates for December 1st, 2017 tax levy.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing on the millage rates for December 1st, 2017 tax levy.
Second.
Township Board is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed December 1st, 2017 millage rates. The 2017 millage rates must be certified by Wayne County by October 1st, 2017. These millage rates are required to balance the fiscal year 2018 budget. The combined millage rates of 10.9 mils for the December 1st, 2017 levy would be the same millage total of 10.9 mils that was levied a year ago. Are there any board questions or comments?
Opening the meeting or in the meeting?
Well, on this, on this item. Is there any discussion on this item?
Well, I've got three motions in a sense. So there's going to be essentially three votes, right? Vote to open the hearing, vote to close the hearing, and then a vote on the levy. So.
I probably will have some comments on.
In favor of opening.
Yeah, let's open that meeting.
I'm in favor of opening the public hearing because I'm going to be out of town.
When we vote on the levy, I'll probably have some comments, but.
That's very good. All right, so we, do we have, the motion has been presented and supported. Those in favor of promoting or opening public hearing, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I've already read the introductory, so that being said, is, are there any discussions? Is there any discussion?
From the community or?
From, well, from us.
Okay. Well, then I will make a, just a quick comment here is, it's great that we're keeping the millage rate flat and through our budgeting process, we're able to do that. I have said it before, and I am more than willing to entertain the discussion and a motion to raise millage specifically for roads. And if the board were interested in doing that, I'd be interested in doing that, and I personally think we should be doing that. Other than that, I'm glad to approve this millage tonight.
Good. Any additional comments? None. That being said, should we call for a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Those in favor of closing the public hearings, state aye.
Aye.
Carries. Now to the third motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the millage rates to be levied by Canton Township on December 1st, 2017 be set as follows. For the charter mills, to general fund, 1.366. For the fire protection special assessment, 3.8580. For the police protection special assessment, 5.6760. For a total of 10.9.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Moving on to the consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, could we read the consent calendar as?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as written with item C1, consider second reading of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances for the Singh Executive Park rezoning. And for item C2, consider request to decrease/increase public safety blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Good. Those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to general calendar. Item G1, consider approval of the preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park Detached Condominiums and variants to the condominium ordinance.
Sorry, allow me one moment, my P F crashed. This hasn't happened in a little while. Let's see here.
Oh, it's right in front of me. Got it back up.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the resolution as follows for the approval of variants to the condominium ordinance and preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park Detached Condominium. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of a variance to the condominium ordinance to allow 26 units on a dead end cul-de-sac and preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park Detached Condominiums located on the north side of Cherry Hill Road between Lots and Hanon Roads on tax, on the tax parcels listed. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and made a recommendation to approve the request for the variance in preliminary site plan approval. And whereas the requested variance to the condominium ordinance meets the general criteria pursuant to sections 82-7 of the Code of Ordinances as provided in the background, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan hereby approve the request of the petitioner to approve the variance to the condominium ordinance to allow 26 units on a dead end cul-de-sac and preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park Detached Condominium on the tax parcels listed, subject to correction of the cul-de-sac radius and subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Court.
But in addition to what Clerk Segrist has just stated, there are four general criteria in section 82-7 of the code which have all been satisfied. Number one, the variance would not be detrimental to health, safety, welfare, or adversely impact adjacent properties. Two and three, the conditions of the property are unique due to the isolated nature of the parcel since it situates between the existing apartment complex and a topsoil operation, not affording it the ability to gain another point of access. And number four, the variance would not vary in the provisions with the zoning code, Comprehensive Plan Condominium Act. That being said, are there any board discussion or comments? Go ahead, Anne Marie, please.
So I know in some other, of the other plans we've looked at, even though this one doesn't have a back way to it, is there any way that there could be a, even a two-track trail from North Lots to the back for emergency purposes at all? I don't know. I mean, is that out of the question? I see that Lots Road has like this open grass area, I can see it from Google.
The, the area that you're referencing is owned by the International Transmission Company, and that's, you know, generally it's not a place where they allow roads to be constructed.
Not a road, but just like a dirt track for emergency vehicles. I don't know, we've done that in other areas of Canton, I found out.
We have not put emergency access for any developments ever in through the International Transmission Corridors property. We have constructed pedestrian trails through the ITC corridor, and we had to pay, took us eight years of negotiations with ITC, and we had to pay a sizable amount of money in order to procure the easement to do that.
We had another development, it's not pedestrian, but it is actually an emergency access area.
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
An emergency access area, not a pedestrian right of way. It's, I'll have to find out, I'll figure it out. There's, I was talking earlier. No? Okay.
Did we, the ones west of Ridge, south of Ford, there is gravel?
There is, yeah, there was.
There was, it's not anymore?
Yeah, it's in the process of being built out, but that emergency access road was a requirement of the condominium ordinance for a second point of access while they were building out the balance of the project. And that was all within land that the developer controlled. There is the ITC corridor that runs east-west through there, but that's south of the limits of where that, where that road was, was constructed.
Were you referencing ITC for this one? You were just using it as example for another one, or?
ITC actually owns, if you can see my mouse, there's the, the east-west property here to the north is owned by ITC, and they have transmission lines that go east-west across the entire township through that, through that area.
My, I was just helping with that question. I, my, my question is more on the, sorry, is, this is the one that, I'm sorry, I'm confusing myself. Is this the one that was up last two weeks ago? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was commenting on the right one.
Christian Colbitt sent out a memo.
Right, in referencing that memo, it seems that, from what our attorney, who's not here tonight, but she sent us a memo, said was that essentially it meets state codes or greater codes than ours, which are more restrictive. So my question, I guess, to her, that doesn't have to be answered tonight, is why do we have the more restrictive code anyway? If it's not something that we can enforce essentially? And if we can't enforce it and she, and there aren't other reasons for having it, I would just say remove it from the books because it's, it kind of ends up being a waste of time if it's not something that we can decide to grant a variance on or not.
I think.
I would love to comment on that.
Sure, thanks.
The decades Canton Township has held developers to higher standards than many communities surrounding us, which is why we have the look and feel that you have throughout the township. That being said, I and my own personal circumstances, a couple decades ago, got into a debate with, with Tom Yak, and we both kind of agreed that, you know, I could sue you, and I would win, but it's cheaper just to do what you're telling me to do township. And we've done that to developers throughout the community for decades, and they've worked with us for the most part because they too in the end have done well by building high-quality products.
I think, you know, specifically to Trustee Steineman's question, the complexity is that we have multiple codes with multiple jurisdictions all across the township. In this particular case, you have a zoning code that has some very definitive performance criteria in it that have been there for, like I said last, you know, a couple weeks ago, probably been there, you know, in excess of 20 or 30 years. And then you have things like the International Fire Code, which is another set of standards that gets kind of layered on top of it. So that's where a little bit of judgment kind of comes into play by both staff, the Planning Commission, and the Township Board to try to align, as Kristen had suggested in the code, or in her memo, maybe we could align these things in the future. To try to do that is quite challenging, and we're certainly open to trying to undertake that, but the reality is, as soon as we align our code to meet the International Fire Code, then somebody at the International Fire Code Council may say, hey, I think we should allow 69 lots on a thousand-foot cul-de-sac, and now we're out of sync again. And that's kind of how the evolution of these codes occurs, and it's, it is an ever-ongoing challenge to try to keep them all aligned. Kristen had pointed out also, I think when we sat down with Carol Rosati, our zoning and planning attorney, our outside counsel, that a task eventually that needs to be undertaken by the township is to update the entire zoning code. It is in excess of 400 pages of text. That is, you know, a pretty small font. It's a lot, it's a big undertaking, it's going to be a very expensive endeavor when we do it, and we've tentatively planned to start doing that in 2019. We will need a professional assistance to undertake that code review. We're going to have to hire a planning consultant to help the staff do a comprehensive rewrite of zoning, but again, you know, we could spend all that time and money and come up with a new code, and then the next year, whether it's the building code or the International Property Maintenance Code or the fire code, something's going to change in that, and then we're out of sync. But it's, you're always kind of chasing it, and then we get in these situations like this one where there's a little bit of interpretation and is the request reasonable or not, and I think that's what Kristen was trying to identify in her memo.
Yeah, I can appreciate all that, it just gets frustrating at times when we want to do things as a community and for either safety reasons or, or as Pat, you said, as quality of life or the look of things and things like that, and that we decide that, yeah, we can put these out there, but if we really want to enforce them, it's difficult to do so. So that can be frustrating. If there's a reason to, I mean, it doesn't take a lot of time to discuss these things, of course, it's just, if I don't have the right to do, to vote a certain way, why am I even voting is sometimes the concern that I have. If there was something that we were able to negotiate in this case based on this issue, that's great, I don't know if we did or not, but that, that was just a comment that I made.
Question?
Yes, please.
So in your 2019 proposed budget, are you putting in funds for this project that you talked about looking at the zoning ordinance?
Just to begin the internal prep work with the plan in 2020 to hire the consultant. It'll take a full 12 months of consulting work to redo our code, no question. Based on, I know, you know, like Novi's done it, a few other communities have done it the last five or six years. It's definitely, it's a big undertaking, but I think it is a good time. It's been, you know, we've lived with this code substantially for at least 25 years now.
Yeah, I can, and I can just, I mean, I can just say from my, from my standpoint, yeah, it's harder for me, I think, as a non-planner or non-public safety expert to argue that I have a better idea of what the public safety implications are, especially if it conflicts with what the International Fire Code, you know, the International Fire Code is recommending. I think that that puts us into a, you know, an unreasonable situation where we would have a hard time explaining that, so that's why I'm okay revisiting this issue.
Please, Diane.
Yeah, I know Kristen had sent out a memo which was very helpful, and I talked to Jeff a little more, which answered a lot of my questions, so I appreciate it. I'm glad we're having to do this.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Thanks, no, and thanks, everybody for commenting too, but it is, it is frustrating that we can't, you know, it is, when we have to vote, we have, really don't have a choice, it's kind of like we're a box to check rather than really having a decision on items. Thanks.
No further discussion, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying none, motion carries, item G2. Thank you, gentlemen, we let you off easy tonight. There you go. Have a good night. Very good. Okay, item G2, let me get to that for you. Consider approval of Metro Act permit for Verizon Access Transmission Service.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the Metro Act right-of-way telecommunications permit to Verizon Access Transmission Service and authorize the Township Clerk, myself, to sign the permit on behalf of Canton Township.
In 2003, Canton Township's telecommunications ordinance number 157, now known as Chapter 66, the Township Code of Ordinances, became effective. For this ordinance, the township must not unreasonably withhold the issuance of a permit to occupy and the use of public right-of-way. For telecommunications providers, provided the application is administratively complete. On August 5th, 2017, we received an application from Verizon Access Transmission Service for a permit to install various underground and above-ground utilities within the township. The application appears to be administratively complete, and the applicant has paid the $500 application fee. Is there any board comments or discussion items? Go ahead, Stephen.
Are there any towers involved in this that we're going to hear about?
There are not. It's all a combination of using the existing DTE poles and buried underground communication.
Are there board comments, questions? Saying none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G3. Consider approval of dedication of portion of right-of-way on the west side of Ridge Road, north of Ford Road.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the quitclaim deed for the transfer of the right-of-way on Ridge Road, north of Ford Road on behalf of Canton Township.
Second.
Belper Park West Apartment Development is working with Wayne County on permitting for the paving of Ridge Road. North of Ford Road, the quitclaim deed and exhibit showing the dedication of 60-foot of the property along the Patriot Park frontage has been prepared for execution. Staff is requesting the Township Supervisor be authorized to sign the deed on behalf of Canton Township. And Tim's got the map up there, and we're talking about the north.
Yeah, basically here from the, from the northwest corner of Ford at Ridge, all the way along the frontage of the future Patriot Park, past the driveway up here, and then northerly to approximately this location. That's the existing farm home that is on the, on the west side of roads just north of our park. So this will facilitate the construction of the section of road that Singh is doing and actively wants to get started on in the next couple of weeks.
Will there be a sidewalk or a path along that?
There are, I'd have to pull that site plan up, and I'll maybe send you a response tomorrow on it, but I'm pretty sure that there were sidewalks along the entire frontage of Singh's parcel, but.
On his side?
Yeah. And then there'll be, you know, something eventually on the Patriot Park side when the township develops that property.
Because we have, on Ford Road, we have the gravel path, right?
We do. So the prep work was done so that pathway could be put in along the Ford Road frontage.
And.
And then you can see, this is actually the, this thing called Mayfield West is actually the existing pathway that was constructed by Pulte when Pulte built the subdivision over here, Parkside North, last year. So this is not a road, it's actually, actually a gravel trail that goes through Patriot Park.
What's the intent for that?
That's a, it's a township park, it's a, you know.
I mean, I mean that path.
Yeah, multi-use path, just to take people from Ridge and from the development into the park area.
Say that way, so.
Yes. Yep. It's actually also the alignment that was used for installation of the water main through the site. Yes, yeah, it'll be maintained as part of Leisure Services' responsibilities for the park.
Board comments? Saying none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Yes? Okay, good. Thank you, moving on, item G4. Consider approval to purchase equipment for outfitting the Public Works trench rescue trailer.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of necessary trench rescue equipment from First Du Fire Supply for an amount of $11,732.59, and waive the purchase policy requirements for multiple bids since this is a sole source provider.
Second.
Coordination with the Township's Public Safety Department, Public Works, has been coordinating the retrofit of an existing enclosed trailer to accommodate the trench rescue equipment. This emergency rescue equipment and trailer will be mobilized to sites around the township where evacuation activities occur. Total cost of the equipment is $11,732. Are there any board questions, comments?
Have we ever had to use anything like this, or?
Fortunately, we have not had to use any trench rescue equipment in the township that we have in neighboring jurisdictions, and this is just a cooperative effort between DPW and the Fire Department to make sure that the resources are unseen in the event that one of our employees becomes trapped or, or injured down in the trench, that we have the capabilities to perform a rescue.
Other cities also, or?
No, this won't be responding outside of the township, that's what we have the fire mutual consortiums for. This is solely to protect our employees and have the resources available for that in the event that that emergency occurs within the township.
No other comments or discussion? Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
G5. My favorite. Board acceptance of Election Commission's approved changes to Canton Township's voting precincts and polling location.
All right, and this is going to be in the form of two motions this evening. Mr. Supervisor, I move to concur with the resolution of the Election Commission approving the division of Precinct 35 resulting in the creation of one new voter precinct, Precinct 10, in Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan, the merging and elimination of Precincts 6, 10, and 34 into surrounding precincts, the realignment of boundaries to listed precincts, and the renaming of Precincts 41 and 42. This division of precincts will bring the total number of voting precincts in the Charter Township of Canton to 40.
Second.
Summary, Clerk Segrist has spent the last couple of months working very hard reviewing the approved, current approved township development and existing voting precincts. And he's found opportunities to create more efficiently-run precincts and allocate voters in more equitable faction, fashion. The clerk is seeking Township Board acceptance of the precinct reconfigurations and polling location changes approved by the Election Commission. These changes will follow the township, allow the township to absorb over 5,000 new voters, streamline the cost of administering future elections, maximize location efficiency, reduce travel distance and time for voters, and decrease the likelihood of lines at the polls. As a final result of the implementation, the township will oversee an overall reduction from 42 to 40 voter precincts and 24 to 19 polling locations, reducing our cost of future elections. So, well done Clerk Segrist and company. Are there any other questions or discussions or anything you'd like to add, sir?
Question, what type of outreach are you going to do to let people know that their polling locations are changing and things like that?
Yeah, no, that's a fantastic, that's a fantastic question, and I tried answering it to the best that I could, but it was pretty, pretty, kind of, I guess, you know, in the RBA for the implementation plan, but state law is pretty clear about when you make a change to an individual's voting location and/or precinct number, that you, you give them written notice. And so everybody who is affected will be getting a new voter ID card, but there will also be an alert or a notification letting them know, in particular, if their location has changed, but also if just the precinct number has changed, which to be honest, for most people is fairly inconsequential, but, so we will be sending new voter registration cards, mailing to every voter, and in that, is kind of how that will be going. My intention is to go to some of the service clubs, maybe some of the homeowners associations, and kind of go over the overarching plan, explain to people any of the, any of the changes, because anytime you kind of alter with, with what people are familiar with, they can become a little bit concerned in general. It's part of the reason I decided to do it now as opposed to later on, is the fact that, one, we didn't have an election this year, so I actually had the time to do it, and it was the recommendation of outgoing Clerk Terry Bennett, who did tell me not to waste this year, and also alerted to me the, the fact that Precinct 35 would be unable to function as a precinct by the next election because of the development that's going on there. So I knew that that, that we would not be legally allowed to have a precinct in 35, so I had to split that, and so I figured if we are going to be splitting, you know, so in this instance, 35 will be split into Precinct 10 and Precinct, and Precinct 35. so in this instance, 35 will be split into Precinct 10 and Precinct, and Precinct 35. So the notion was do it now, gives people an opportunity to work the kinks out, get a plan, be familiar with it. You've got the gubernatorial primary next year, any of the school board, if there's a school board election in May, if, that gives you the gubernatorial election in November. Also, that gives you any other municipal elections or smaller elections in 2019 to kind of practice. And then in, by 2020, you'll have the presidential preference primary, you'll have the primary itself, which are low-turnout elections and great opportunities. And then, so, in a sense, you have the opportunity to vote seven times before the next kind of big presidential election, which would bring out between 72 and 74 percent voter turnout. So my intention is to, one, send direct, you know, communicate directly to the individual, give them the hard, concrete new voter card, also with a list that things have changed. And then additionally, we'll be putting something in the Canton connection and trying to get local newspapers to do an article about the overall change, so it's out of people's radar, and, and then go, and I've got a little presentation I can take on the road.
Yes, please, Diane.
Thank you very much, Michael. You did a really good job, even looking towards the future, because I know where I voted, it's rolling out, and it had that area precinct, and it was a very small building, and we moved some of the precincts around to accommodate the residents and people to vote, so, thank you very much. And you're doing it early enough to get everybody aware of your voting precinct.
I appreciate those sentiments. You know, I kind of had five overarching goals.
That's why I was going to ask you to.
Yeah.
Your goals.
Yeah, so my goals were pretty much, you know, one was to absorb the 5,700 new voters, or, you know, that I'm estimating we will have by 2020. And number two was to streamline the cost of administering the election. You know, we have a precinct which has 280 registered voters, and the entry level to running an election in that precinct is about, I believe, about $1,200, and that's to count 200, that's not even to count 280 votes, because most of that precinct votes absentee. So it's to count 70 votes, we're paying 1,400, you know, about $1,200. To administer an election in an ideal precinct costs about between 14 and $1,500. So for only $300 more, I've got people counting 800 votes versus 75, and so I looked at some inefficiencies in kind of how that was there, and I said, there's some opportunities here to really cut down on the cost of running it, and also, I wanted to maximize the location efficiency, which makes it easier to administer election, the election on Election Day. So that's kind of an internal house cleaning. I wanted to reduce the travel distance and time for voters to the polling locations. You have instances where voters will be passing two or three polling locations to get to theirs. Canton is, you know, not an overly large community, it's six, you know, well, we are, but it would be six miles by six miles, so we're not talking about a huge trek, but for many people, this, this, I think, will, will make it easier to vote, and it will make it less burdensome. And then the five was to reduce the potential likelihood of lines at locations, and that was just because you had about seven, seven precincts that would be getting to, you know, they would, the, the, the number of registered voters was getting to the point where in 2016, I saw, or we saw, we witnessed lines, sometimes more than an hour, and that's usually a result of something going wrong inside of the precinct on Election Day, which is outside of the control of the clerk's office, but when you have efficient precincts, where they're not overburdened or underburdened, you, you don't have the oppor, you know, you don't have the same kind of danger of having a line. So those were kind of my goals, and I think that this plan really achieves all five of those goals.
So, yeah, this is really good job. Now, did this also eliminate, remember we had found some people that had said that they could not, they had, they actually passed a polling place to vote?
Sure, yeah, you will, look, I was, in making these changes, I was kind of weighing all five of those goals, and I had a number of other concerns. One was the cost, right? So there's the cost of administering the elections for the future, there's also the cost of mailing out all of these changes, also overly confusing voters unnecessarily. So if I didn't have to move somebody's polling location, I would not, I didn't want to. I just didn't want to create unnecessary chaos. So in some instances, this is not 100 percent the most efficient plan I could, I could come up with. This is the most efficient plan, given a respect for people's, I guess, people feeling safe and secure and feeling, having, being confident and knowing their location. So I think the instance where you're talking about, where, yes, I removed Mettaal Airport, for example, so if, like, my favorite example is if you lived in Cinnamon Point at the corner of Lots and Cherry Hill, you would have to drive past three polling locations to vote at Mettaal Airport. Now luckily, I found, one, that the facility there was, it was, it was kind of a small facility, it was oddly located and hard to get to, and so I wanted to remove it anyway, and so since I was removing it, that was an opportunity to have those voters go to a location that is closer to their home. Now they could go, there's a building closer, there's a polling place closer, but their, their commute was cut down by about an, by probably about a mile to a mile and a half. So I looked for, for quick wins, trying to balance all five of those kind of priorities.
Just wanted to add that I was on the commission, I guess, is it the state law that requires us to have a commission of three?
That is correct.
Board members? And so Trustee Anthony and I and Clerk Segrist made up the commission, and the clerk took us through the entire presentation, which I'm hoping will be on the website, or, or parts of it that show the details of what you talked about.
Oh, yeah, yes. I was, yeah, I was thinking about making one, that, I put in about 36 slides, so maybe there's a more accessible one for people, but yeah, sure.
Yeah, and I thought it was very thorough and well-thought-out. Personally, I think it was probably his staff that helped him with, to do that, but you and your depart.
A lot of work.
You and your department put in a lot of work, I agree, and I really, Trustee Anthony and I had some questions, but really, you left nothing for us to really question, and it was really easy to approve, especially because you brought donuts to the meeting, so that was helpful as well.
Trustee Anthony, Trustee Anthony made me bring donuts, and he did not even eat one, so, funded by that. No, I think part of what I wanted to do was, outside of getting the change that I thought was right, was to make sure that the actual change was right, and so I definitely took the, I went one by one to the individuals who are involved in the administration of the election, and so, you know, and I, and I gave my presentation, showed them the plan, and I took their input, and I, until I got to the point where I was ready for the Election Commission to look at it, and I thought we had left nothing to chance. And these are all projections, though, so, you know, but the best plan I could come up with.
Good job.
Question, those in favor of the first motion as presented state aye.
Aye.
Carries, next motion.
All right, now here's where I actually need your authority, because to implement this plan, we have to create two new polling places. Mr. Supervisor, I move to designate Liberty Middle School and The Village Theater as the polling locations for additional voter precincts, and altering the polling places according to the attached plan. The establishment of new polling places will be bringing, bring the total number of locations in the Charter Township of Canton to 19.
Those in favor of the motion as presented state aye.
Aye.
Carries, is there a third motion, or, very good, moving on to G six. Approval of blanket purchase order of $15,000 to Canon Solutions America, Inc. for two high-speed scanners and one Canon IRAD V DV 400 IF printer for use in the clerk's office for elections.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request for a blanket purchase order to Canon Solutions America Incorporated for the purchase of election equipment in the amount of $15,000 from the account listed.
Second. Summary, the state of Michigan is requiring all communities to purchase new election equipment. Wayne County has awarded the county contract to Dominion Voting Systems, Inc. Peripheral equipment associated with this new election equipment is responsibility of the individual community. The scanners needed to tabulate absent voter ballots are part of the peripheral, peripheral equipment. Clerk's office also utilizes a very old printer, HP LaserJet 8,000, to print approximately 20,000 to 25,000 pages for every election. This printer is in need of replacement, although the clerk's office has solicited bids for this machine, the only company to reply so far has been Canon, offering their Canon 253 DW monochrome printer at a cost of $26.86, which is part of this package. Is there anything additional you'd like to add, Clerk Segrist?
Yeah, just, just, you know, for the purposes of transparency, right, we had, in our blanket PO for Dominion Voting Systems, decided that we were going to go with their scanner package. This is kind of phase two of that. If you look at, under the background, the comparison of the off-the, of the cost, you will understand why we are going to be going with Canon as opposed to going directly with that vendor. This is what Westland used on their AV board in their August election. It processed about 7,000 absentee ballots, and they were done counting within minutes of the election closing. We had 15,000 absentee ballots or around there in this last presidential election, so we're probably going to be somewhere around there or higher by the next presidential election. So in order to do that, we kind of, we needed these scanners. You could buy them off the shelf, Canon offered the best deal, they also threw in two printers that are required, free of charge as well, so that was why we decided to go with them for this upgrade and not go with Dominion. We will be, we will be required to purchase the software, two low-speed sca, high-speed scanners, or two smaller high-speed scanners, and the, the workstation from Dominion as well, but this will amount to about a, probably a $50,000 savings to the township.
Michael?
Yes.
Just, from my understanding and for the community, we will be getting new elec, equipment at the polls, right?
Correct.
And will the township be paying for that equipment at the polls? Is that something we have to purchase and?
So, great question. Go ahead, do you have a second follow-up question?
And when?
Oh, and when, okay. So if the board recalls, our first meeting in July, we had accepted a grant from the, from the state of Michigan, which amounts to a substantial amount of money, and I don't, I, I, I don't remember, I believe it was $380,000 of equipment we will be receiving from the state of Michigan. That amounts to 24 ADA accessible or voter, voter accessible machines for individuals with a disability who come to the polling place to vote. That also amounts to the covering of 42, because it's based on the old model, the old plan we had for our precincts, 40, we had 42 precincts. So there will be tabulators for each one, those are about $5, $5,400 each as well. So we will be receiving new tabulators and new accessible machines, and the machines are far superior to the old accessible machines. So those will be going, those are all paid for by a grant from the state of Michigan, and we should be receiving them before the end of the year. There are, I will be bringing another purch, actually, that's below $10,000, so, but, for the accessible machines, I need printers, and, but it's below, we got a good deal from, from Dell, so that won't be coming before the board, but, so you will more than likely be, I'm almost done spending the money that was budgeted for this year, almost, but yeah, we will not be paying, the state of Michigan will be paying for that equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, seeing none? Those in favor of the motion as presented state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G seven, is considered purchase of two sets of Hearst extrication equipment.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of two sets of Hearst extracation equipment from Apollo Fire Equipment in the amount of $64,950.
This request is asking to acquire two sets of extracation systems, better than equipment, or better known as jaws of life. The first set of electric combination tool with a cutter, spreader, and ram, which will be stocked on the new ladder truck. The second is a hydraulic tool with a cutter, spreader, and ram, which will replace outdated set currently stocked on the heavy rescue. By owning two different operating systems, the department will have the ability to gain the best and quickest entry into vehicles under all possible scenarios. This equipment is essential in situations requiring extrication of crash victims trapped in their vehicles. The newer hydraulic tool will provide needed boost with gaining entry into some of the newer vehicles that are difficult to work with, given the current equipment that we have available to us. Apollo Fire Equipment is the sole source vendor of Hearst extrication equipment in our area and has quoted a total of $64,950 for the purchase. Are there any additional board questions, comments? Chief Stockline with us this evening, if there are, go ahead, Anne Ray.
So what do we do with the old equipment? Is that sold to somebody, or?
The old equipment will just be stocked for training, it's, it really has no value because it, it can't be used on some of the newer model cars, so we use it for training and maybe donate it to a school craft college or another college for fire training.
How many set, we have two of those also, or?
We only have one set, one set that's being replaced currently.
No other board comments, questions, those in favor of the motion as presented state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on, item G eight. Consider approving Phase Two of consulting services for Fire Station Number Two improvements and associated budget amendments.
Two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve OHM Advisor's proposal for Phase Two of the Fire Station Number Two Improvement Study, consisting of a floodplain impact study, MDEQ permitting, and a preliminary site plan.
Second. Canton's Engineering Services has been actively working with OHM Advisors, who recently completed the initial phase of a feasibility study for significant building and site improvements to Fire Station Number Two located at 4,1,500 Warren Road. The project is ready to move into Phase Two, consisting of OHM providing the following: Site evaluation report for proposed reconstruction of Fire Station Number Two, schematic site plan with proposed features and extent of floodplain impacts, copies of all permit applications submitted by OHM to Michigan's Department of Environmental Quality on behalf of the project. OHM's proposed cost of performing all aspects of Phase Two is based on the details outlined in your package, as long, as well as hourly rates and expenses incurred, all of which is not to exceed $36,922. Are there any questions for Director Meyer? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a second motion.
Supervisor, I further move to approve an amendment to the 2017 fire budget in the amount of $36,922 for this project, decreasing appropriations from the fund balance account and increasing appropriations to the professional contracted services for professionals.
Support. Okay, those in favor of the second motion to clean up the books and the account numbers state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes the official business we have this evening. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any board comment?
If we, if I'm not mistaken, do we end up activating one of our fire units to go down to, can you talk about that for a second?
Yeah, we, Michigan Task Force One, which is a statewide Type III urban search and rescue team, FEMA Type III team, was activated to assist in Florida. We have three firefighters that are assigned to that team, two that are deployable as of today. Those two firefighters deployed with the task force on Sunday. They traveled down to Jacksonville, Florida, where they assisted in some operations, but were demobilized today, and they're on their way back to Michigan.
Okay, well, I think it's fantastic that we participate in that, I'm extremely proud, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we go to Texas at all? Because I thought I heard that there's some Michigan firefighters there also.
No, we were not, they activated all 28 Type I teams for Texas, they didn't activate any Type III teams for that deployment.
Comments, call for motion, oh, Director Foss.
Just the reminder for next week that we're meeting at the landfill on Lily Road South at 5:00 PM for a one-hour tour. Weather permitting, we'll go up to the top of the hill, but we'll, we'll see, definitely see the, the gas plant and just talk a little bit about landfill operations, and then come back here at 6 o'clock for a. back here at six o'clock for a study session on the capital improvement program update project that we're working on with OHM. New.
This is what I need to know, if I need to wear waders or something.
Wear comfortable shoes, yeah, wear comfortable shoes for sure, because there is definitely, you know, some walking involved, but we'll be driving to the top, again, weather permitting, if it's raining and too mucky, we're probably not going to, you know, risk going up there and getting stuck, so.
No hip boots or anything like that required there?
No, and it's all you can eat.
Oh, great, thanks.
At the top of the hill.
I don't know if any of my fellow board members are photographers, but if you've got a higher-quality camera, it's a nice day, it is an amazing view, it goes all the way beyond Northville, you can see the city of Detroit, so, if you've got a high-quality camera, I suggest you bring it.
They are doing what they call their annual community open house, it's open to the public, if anybody is interested in attending. Amy Hamilton in our office is taking those reservations, they've limited it to twenty public to attend, but many of Director Meyer's staff from both the fire and police service will be attending throughout the day, just to kind of see their operation and be familiar with the type of equipment and facilities that they have there, and then the board's going to be kind of specially hosted at five o'clock.
Do they, does the, is the public goes to the top also, or?
No, I don't think that's something, that's not a place where they typically take the public, they just kind of show them the, the facilities down at the bottom, but that's really kind of a judgment call on their part.
Also, we had a wildly successful hazardous rate waste return, a whole lot of material did not go into the landfill, which we appreciate, little traffic congestion that Public Safety tried to help out with, used it myself, and I'm glad we did what we've done. When is the next event in Canton Township? I've already been asked.
First weekend in September next year, so we, once a year.
Once a year.
Correct, but we advertise the other events that the, that Wayne County hosts throughout other communities in Wayne County, and then certain hazardous waste can be dropped off during the Canton cleanup weekends at GFL's facility, that are, those dates are all on our township website, so there's certain stuff that can be dropped off by the residents on those Fridays and Saturdays.
Other communities will let our citizens, our residents, go to their communities for hat, for?
Only in the circumstances where Wayne County is providing that service for the other communities, yep.
What about, we've been asked about shredding services also, didn't we do that before, where people can bring documents to be shredded? We didn't do that this year, though.
We, at the senior summit is, was where it started out, was attended, or wildly popular, so then we had a shredding day, hired the service, and it was kind of like hazardous waste day, it was a logistical nightmare, very expensive, and not carried in current budgets, to the best of my knowledge.
Previously, the other, other than the one that you mentioned, the township clerk's office had done one periodically, like, I think it was maybe about every other year, they do an additional shred day, but, again, it's all-
Oh, Michael, you have to stand there and tear papers up.
All subject to budget.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we wanted to do another significant event, it'd be budgeted, line it up, something would say, let's put the money aside to do.
I wonder if you could do it with a hazardous day, like, have a truck, you go this way if you want to do the shredding, or this way for hazardous waste, and combine it?
Anything is possible, just takes money, anything's possible.
Well, we'll talk, maybe I'll talk to you, Tim, at some point about that and get your feel, so.
You're good.
Ooh, I saw that they started putting the, the patchwork in on Canton Center, Canton Center North, that's starting, that looks good, you know, some of that stuff's looking good, exciting, a lot of orange barrels in Canton right now.
Call for a motion to close?
So moved.
Second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, good night, everyone, thank you.